Recording in progress.
Call me Norv. Approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I make the motion we approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Any council discussion? Here it is done. All a favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is claims. Give you a second to look through them.
They don't need to do attendance?
Oh. Judy wants us to do attendance. Say the roll call.
Smith?
Bladwick.
Welker?
Woods. Is Kara on there?
She is.
She's not muted. I don't hear her.
Can't hear her.
She's making her mouth move, but no sounds coming out.
Kara, you need to figure out your, uh...
Nobody's home?
She's there.
She's talking. Just dial home.
She's walking away.
Some of the odd ones on your, like, Big Sky Fire Out Systems, that's for doing all the fire extinguishers we have to annually. And then for Platinum, uh, that's for annual software fees, $12,400. Annual divestiture of Montana Rural Water Systems, they help us with the operation of the water resources on a technical side. Who is D-Claim Filling?
It was a library claim. It was a kid that did some work at the library.
Claims for good examples?
Sure. I'll make some for you.
Okay.
This bill's official.
Uh-huh.
Uh-huh. That was out a few minutes ago. This is, I just didn't do the top page. It's, uh...
It's like four pages.
Yeah.
Okay.
Excellent. We have to... Cats don't use tires.
Cars does. Okay. Got a motion to approve the claims?
Motion we approve the claims.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Approve the claims. Any council discussion? All a favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is financials. New York March Financial Report. Motion's made and seconded. Council discussion on the financials. Here it is. All a favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now even.
Thank you. It'd like to be five minutes to figure this up.
Hate it.
This is only computer, Randy. My phone.
So... So this last month is, uh, been more busy on the public works side with, uh, doing, uh, as people have seen on Spring Street, we've had some sewer problems. We've had some sewer problems in other places in town. Um, I've been a couple times with Chai on, which we'll talk about that a little bit later, Parks Recreation. Uh, Mike Dawson hopefully shows up here tonight. We'll talk about that a little bit on what's going on there. He has a little more information. More on what's going on, so... I've been over a couple times and we did some different things. Public Works, like I said, we've seen Spring Street, we've had sewer line problems, we've done some connections around town. We had some more sewer problems on the other side of town. Uh, this time of year is bad because the roots are, the trees are starting to grow, so the roots are really coming. Some of the pipe in town, like over here, is just old clay tile pipe, so it just has belt joints and the roots are trying to just get them into them and stuff. That one there, Kewaliva Project, we had no maps on where it was. We had no access to it. Most of our main lines have manholes and stuff out there. We did not. We had to just dig and find it. We had to dig till we could find the problem and then, um, repair it. We set the camera up or down either way because we had no access. They just put it in the line, out in the middle of the line, and they had no way to get into it, so that's why. That took a while. It was a big hole in that, but... There's a new house on down in, uh, on B Street. We did, uh, connections there. There's another section, so it... So they've been busy this month, uh, jetting and, uh, cleaning sewer systems and stuff, so... Uh, they started fixing some potholes, uh, working on the cleanup of the streets and for Mary, hopefully if the weather stays nice, we'll start painting, uh, the lines for her, so she knows where the crosswalks are.
How about those culverts? Is that what the tribal person would say they come talking about?
Escape marks.
Okay.
Yeah. The culvert thing, we're, uh, still working on some stuff there. We got some prices, we got some things. We just have to, let's continue working on that and, uh, get, keep moving forward. I'll do this summer, get some of those changed out. I was working with Cali on some of that back too, because we do pay into the bridge and, bridge fund, which is, pays for some culverts too, so, um... Dan was supposed to get it back to me. He has no one to touch base with him again and, uh... That, so we're still moving forward. Just, sometimes it gets slow. Got to keep reminding everybody. Fire Department, um, another busy month. We had, uh, a couple of structured fire calls, which turned out not to be structured fires. People calling things in that, yeah, there was smoke, but that isn't what was going on, so, um, a couple of car crashes. So, one of our new trucks, uh, this is, uh, the rural lot. This one is, uh, one of our first out trucks, has all the rescue equipment on it and water pump and stuff, so... Still working on those upgrades with Fire Department, so we're pulling through. So that of the rural district, uh, since most of the fire activity is in the rural district.
What was that big black smoke that was from?
Bee boxes.
When?
Bee boxes.
All bee boxes.
Bee boxes. Somebody on the guy's car sees some bee boxes.
That was one of them. Yeah, that was one of them that we went to that was nothing. We went at Brown's Metal Road. Um, to a structure fire. There ended up being a construction crew working there around the house. They fired up all their equipment. And put up a big cloud of smoke, and so we called in. Uh, we went to a bar fire yesterday, and it was just some manure on fire in the middle of the bar. It wasn't even near any wood or nothing. So it had been smoking out there. You know, so we've been to quite a few things that were called in as big things, and we get there and it's nothing, so... Which, well, actually, which has been good. I'd really have that, then, have a building's on fire, those always tend to be a mess for everybody involved, including the core buildings, so... We've been doing, actually, the fire and ambulance, been doing quite a bit of training, uh, also, and we have some work coming up, but, uh, the hospital's been here a couple times. Doing some training at the end and some stuff, so it's, uh, been a pretty busy month, that kind of stuff. A wish?
Thank you. How's everybody doing? Alright, so, uh, this will be a busy month for us as well. Uh, of course, we did the court bailiff for the, uh, judges and, uh, the town court. Myself and Officer Visentin went to Helena, and we got oxalizer trained, so DUI enforcement will start to increase. Uh, few arrests, uh, with four citations, number of cars marked, a couple towed. The majority of our postings are being taken seriously and the cars are being moved. Justin Ossuludman is at the academy. He'll be there for a few months, doing well. He will be here on the weekend of homesteaders to help because he will be short. Sean had a, uh, previous engagement prior to coming on to the police department. We interviewed, hired, appointed our third reserve, so we're up to three reserve policemen. Eighteen calls for service, a lot of follow-up investigations and warrants. So I just wanted to touch on a couple of issues. Uh, this will be my first, uh, homesteaders as the chief of police, so we're really excited about that. If there's some things that have come up through, uh, the community that they have seen that they aren't real happy with in the police scene in the, in the past, let us know so we can try to address that if there's areas of concern. During homesteaders, if it seems to be a problem, uh, we'd like to know ahead of time so we could be proactive instead of sort of reactive. Uh, as far as marking the cars, uh, we're gonna do some outreach to notify the town folk that, uh, these cars that are parked in the right of way of the town need to be moved, uh, for multiple reasons. Blight, it doesn't look great, it's on city property, the town guys need the access to mow, um, and, uh, so we want to, uh, if you have cars that are out there, they, they need to be addressed, traders, equipment, uh, things like that, so... Please take care of that so we don't have to start towing. And, um, with the warmer weather and school letting out, please be proactive with your kids. It's best if you guys, uh, parent your kids so we don't have to police them. So let's try to work together. If you need some help and some, um, we could branch out and give some advice and, and services, let's do that. So we can have a, uh, more crime-free, um, you know, kids up to malicious mischief, we try to avoid that because it's very costly to the town and the people and the citizens, so... And those costs will, I will enforce, uh, to the fullest extent to get passed out to their parents, so... Any questions?
Yes.
Oh, please.
Is there a change that you're going to have a bike route during homesteaders?
Oh, yes.
It's on my bed!
My bed!
I'm a fire!
Yes, I'll, uh...
Love Michelle's big eye!
I'll defer to that. No, it's good. You got, uh...
He's a very smart man.
That's right.
He's been carrying a while.
Any other questions? Keep me on Howard.
Yes, I have another question now.
Oh, please.
No, um, both of us. We had our, um, the chief and our other officer who have both gone through the DUI schooling at the state level, um, and they are going to be cracking down on some of the DUIs around here. We've had a lot of complaints from citizens and other people about people driving drunk and unsafe, and we will see probably a little more policing from them on the DUI front, so just so everybody knows. It's not been highly enforced in the past. A lot of people have slid on it, and I suspect that people will be angry when it starts getting enforced a little harder again.
And it, it's really not the personal. It's, uh, we all drive around and we see the, the hearts and the crosses on the highway. With the close proximity that most people that are enjoying their alcoholic beverages in the bars, um, people are living pretty close, so, you know, they just need to be more responsible about what they're doing and think ahead, get a, get a ride or walk.
Pretty small town. You should go a lot if you're gonna take a trip outside, deal about it.
Have a shoulder to walk on.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Alright.
I wanted to add just a little bit, um, and I, and I guess maybe I have to do this at every single meeting. When you have a problem that involves fire or ambulance, and you need the fire department or ambulance, please call 911. When you are having trouble with your sewer or water on your property, do not call the mayor and leave messages for him at his business desk. Because I was out of town a few days last week, so there's been a customer with a sewer problem for five days now, and they never did call City Hall. It could have been, one of the public works guys could have went down there and helped them, figured it out. No, they could only talk to me. I'm not gonna go clean their sewer anyways. I'm gonna end up having one of the public works guys to look at. So this person's been allowed sewer now for five days because they refused to call City Hall. So I'm not, that's fine. I, I, if that's what they want to do, um, but please, call the proper places and it will be addressed, um, you know, that's what those guys are there for. Uh, sewer especially, if someone's having a backup problem, one of the guys, you know, we can go check our manholes, be looked into, see if it's ours or yours, and you go right away, you know. If we're having a backup, we'll get on it right away and get it taken care of, and we have the equipment to do that, so it's... But if we don't know about it, they're not gonna go out there and do anything about it, so, um, well, actually, this one is just the customer. It's not, because they can do our stuff, so... But it does happen. I don't like the, uh, Montana Bar redid their sewer, and, uh, the guy who did it did the trenchless, and he got his tools stuck in our mains, we had, and so I had to get our main retrieved these tools, so... But, so if we know, we can kind of help you out on that, I mean, as, we have maps, we have Asbills, um, one of the things we require is anytime you do any digging on your property, uh, water sewer, we want Asbill for that. And we put that to the address, so down the road, it's towards your property, or if you're down the road, hey, do you have an idea where the sewer line is? You know, we can go pull that out and show people, hey, here it is, right here, just, you know, so we beat up, and it helps them out, I mean, so that's why we try to require these things, you know, charting or, it's just a way to gather that information so that other people have problems.
We have 400 sewer lines in town, so 400 properties with sewer lines on them, and we have about 70 Asbills, so we can only tell 70 people where the lines are on their property.
And actually, like the one we got up over here, that's a city, um, truck line that was put in in 1964, and no, if it was installed, it'd go to the manhole, but it didn't, you know, we just had to dig and find it, and, but sometimes that happens. Did they put a manhole in? It's that clean out of the house. We can at least access it, run the gen or the camera down, you know, but...
Chuck, that makes it a lot easier to, like, put, clean out.
Yep.
And then halfway up there, you can see, oh, probably...
Where it's at, so... Okay, clerk, do you have anything?
Yeah, um, we, it's time to start looking at the budget, but I'll probably email all of you guys just a copy of the, of the line budget, just so you can look at it, look at what last year's look like. Um, we need to do a preliminary budget meeting, whether we do it before the next council meeting, like, the hour before the next council meeting, or if you want to do it at a different date, we just need to figure that out.
Yes, it was out. Okay. Library?
Services to Republic, yeah, okay. 1:00 p.m. on Fridays, their backup this month for many paper processors, 11:00 p.m. on Saturdays. Susan Wright will be at the library on May 16th to do a book signing and talk about the book. If a discussion group failed this month, that's, you have the Rivers Park and Southern Reds on Thursday, maybe, and anybody that's ready to stop in and join us in the discussion. The friends will have their annual honor tour at the big sale in Saddle Roach on Saturday at 10:00 from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The Saddle Roach opens at 3:00 p.m., and the honors will be Lyndon Landberg this year, and, uh, will be serving coffee and cake, uh, which we won't be charging for, in her honor. She, she says she's gonna be there from 9:00 to 11:00, so we really want to visit Lyndon's family. Uh, fortunes with the process of doing inventory, because it was an incredibly busy month for these, so inventory is, it was going to take two months instead of two weeks. Technology, that's a new report at this time. General administrative business, we set up the new building the week of April 7th. We picked up 74 chairs from Tulsa and a room ready. We put 50 chairs and used same side of the building, made 24 in the shed for outdoor use. The library board elected to offer brown stack of the chairs to the Nile Bridge, which they accepted, and we delivered them a ropey key. We have $680.55 left of the $2,500 grant after the chair project, and the founders of the grant allowed use of the money for the collection and listed certificates. So we finished out the map, we have seats for the seat catalog, and books from the Montana Global 2024 collection list. Not all valid, the place that open to libraries ever has matching chairs, ever. It's almost strange to walk in there and see it. But really, really, everything worked out really well in that way, so... This is the last time we'll have this in this report. We haven't reported the last two months yet, and we've posted for library trust in the building. We're expecting trustees to deliver the exhibits and show out floor with interest. The airwork for library posting closes May 20th, and board can work the choose to the county at the date so it can be presented at the June Town Council meeting before the council and the mayor's final approval. Uh, library board will meet at the library Wednesday, May 21st for their monthly meeting, 5:00 p.m. The numbers are at 12:00 Twitter. We were up above 500 last month, and, uh, just people coming into the library, so, uh, the children's members are up. Prince, 427, or 747, and Pop is 72. So things are busy. We will be, uh, painting carpets at the end of the month. We're not, it's, we're not thinking that that's going to interrupt the weekend, uh, we're having a plan on Sunday, so don't bother to do the, uh, intruders, and they have 20 to be good throughout the summer.
Okay. Any questions for them? Thank you. Zoning compliance, um, still just talking to people on other fences and some buildings. We do have, uh, actually, we do have a guy that's been talking to me quite a bit, wanting to change law lines and put five houses on 25-foot lots, and feel much of that, like, on that Austin councils, so if it's not drawn, we'll agree to discuss it, they'll be further really, really true it all up and then update it with the council, so... Um, because the lots will be less than 7,000 square meters, so, so council will have to look at that, so that's, um... The other, the other zoning compliance permits are just standard ones, uh, some fences which were on property lines, they choked ins in the new house down there, of course, we've got some setbacks in that. Uh, we do have a house, uh, they have one for sale in town, um, they did a survey on it, and the garage is a foot or so long of city property. So, have her back from that one, or you have to either, well, that has to come to council for, uh, for the, uh, the variance on that, so... We had to get her back from, so I'm not sure what'll happen there, but that's zoning compliance, something up to it. New business? Homesteaders Days, Open Container and Street Closure. Michelle?
Okay. So first of all, we're here to ask for a container for the weekend of June 13th, 15th, um, um... And then also, this is matter, we're gonna do our streets, we're gonna do normal street closings like we've done in the past. The only difference is, and I have talked to Groo, people at the Wall Street, Bucks, Lanny, um, we are thinking of, because the farmer's market wants to be more centralized in the past, they brought that, we haven't, like, made this official decision. Um, but potentially splitting the farmer's market in front of the Wall Street building, right here, from, only from 9:00 to noon, and you, and then that part of the street would open back up on Saturday. Just to get them more close. It's where the Skunk Gallery Run is gonna end, it's where the car show starts, it's where the cornhole tournament is, and there's just a lot of things that come together at that point in the morning, so we're trying to work with, to come up with a good idea for the farmer's market. Um, and then we want to close the streets at 2:00 p.m. on Friday. Music starts at 5:00. Um, and vendors, of course, as you guys know, they always come in. We're gonna set up the stage at 7:00 a.m. on Friday, um, for the day, for the music. Um, the senior center, I believe, is still doing Indian tacos Friday to kick it off. Um, and then at 5:00 p.m. on Friday, we also have the curridge tournament this year. It's the first year we're doing it. It's in the Honor, Earl and Benham. They used to do a curridge tournament in the past. Um, all the proceeds from that are earned are gonna go to the Hope for Harley Foundation. With that being said, the Hope for Harley Foundation is also going to do a beer garden at the barber shop, because we're down a bar. Uh, we're working with the Sassy Saddle and Louis Place. We're, all three of us are working together, and all the proceeds from that would go to the Hope for Harley Foundation also, as a local fundraiser.
Are you aware that there's a form that you have to get passed through town? You know how to do that?
I told you and asked you for everything that I needed to know, I mean.
I know, I said, I didn't know.
No.
It's, it actually comes from the state of Montana, it's really good for parks.
She already has that.
Okay.
Taylor has that.
Okay. Yeah, it has to come through the town, though. It's not just given to you by the state.
Yeah, on Taylor, so she looked into that. But I will, yes, get that taken care of. Um, so, and then we have the night, car show's at 9:00 a.m., farmer's market, I think it just starts at 9:00, and then, um, Skunk Gallery Run is at 9:00, music starts at 10:00, cornhole is at Groo, that's Saturday. Um, the Kitty Parade is put on by the Artist Society. That's gonna be at noon in front of Bucks. And then we have the Kitty Games that the Hot Springs PTO is doing at 1:00 p.m. The park, this is where we are going to do the Meet the Police Tent. I've worked with Chief Larson and Main Street Liquor. We're gonna have two to four bikes donated. If you come to meet the police, our children and our youth in the area, they can get it put into the rep for a bike, for their age group, for whatever age they are. And then they have lots of goodie bags to give the kids also, to promote them. Let's meet them and your friends, don't worry.
Yeah.
Um, Michelle, I'm not running the farmer's market anymore, but typically they start at 9:30, but I don't know if they decided on a, a, a later time for that day at that.
I, and I've been in contact with them too, so I'll... And I've been in contact with them too, so, yeah. Yeah, oh, the one thing I did forget, Donna's duck race is at 11:00 A.M. on Saturday also. So, yeah, we've got a lot of local donations, actually, for people, maybe things go throughout the whole deal. The rodeo is at 5:00 P M. We started earlier last year, it seemed to work well with the light and then get, because it got dark for on schedule. Street dance is gonna start at 8:00. The pancake breakfast, the pickleball girls are doing the pancake breakfast on Sunday morning. Leslie is going to help and Trudy are working the parade at noon. This year's grand marshal is Lori Merritt. And then following that, they go to the museum, the coffee and cake, and then the rodeo, fire rodeo performance is at 2:00 P M.
What time is the pancake breakfast?
I think it starts at 8:00. They haven't given me all that information, it's when they're gonna start, they usually start at 8:00.
Are they doing the car show?
Car show's Saturday at 9:00.
Really?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yeah.
Are you gonna have somebody there to instruct vendors for the?
Yes. The new owners of this.
It's me, Jen.
Yes, the new owners of the Sassy Saddle, Jess and Shonda, are gonna have, run the information tent, it's gonna be right there, close to the stage, and they will have a map laid out of everywhere, everybody is going.
Awesome, because I got a question last year about where people were to go.
Yep, that's, no, they'll have a tent there.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Um, who's this better this year?
Uh, there's five different ones. So Friday night is local, it's Rust and Dust and Spa City Sound, and I don't have Saturday's lineup, because Charlie hasn't gotten it to me for that one, so I'm not sure on, or Saturday's lineup. But there is five, I believe. Yes. Any other questions? It is gonna be a very busy weekend, because it's also the end of the weekend, correct? Leslie?
Yes.
The end of the weekend.
Oh, it is.
So, we are gonna have a lot of people in town.
Wow.
A big thing also, that was planned over last, it's not perfect, but it happened, so we're gonna.
They have a huge agenda and a lot of workshops, and they put up a giant circus tent on my property, and I really expect, you may or may not see them.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, because they've got a lot of workshops on the property and the size.
I talked to the gentleman that was running it, and he was asking me about all the details too.
Yes.
So, just that and what was going on also.
Can somebody kind of clarify, because the, the library report was kind of hard for me to understand, is there something going on on Saturday at the library?
I don't think the library is doing anything on Saturday.
This Saturday at the library.
This Saturday is at the library, but not during the holidays.
This Saturday, but not, no Saturday.
No, I haven't, no. No? So we're trying to pack it full, promote our job, get it cleaned up, and then hopefully people come back again, come back, so. So, yes, my request is for the open container and then the street closures.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any other motion to approve the street closure as outlined in the open container, which will take place inside of the motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the closure of the streets and the open container for the homesteader days.
I'll second that motion.
Any other, any other council this guy? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You guys speak, Congress.
Oh, well, the street are, the open container is Main Street and also Arley.
Mm-hmm, just like every year that they do.
Every year.
Whatever they set up, I believe that part of them is set up.
Yeah. And then the bars are also going to participate in, no straws, no glass, cleaning up after the bars closed.
Yeah, we did really well last year cleaning up, and Jason and I put our dump trailer right here.
Yes.
And everybody brought all their garbage there, and then we took the dump trailer out to the dump at the end of the year.
All right.
Okay. Next item is Alameda's replacement well. The Town of Hot Springs has ordinance, the wells can be drilled inside city limits without council approval. You want me to take it from here, Paul?
I'm the spectator.
Okay. Very much glad I'm here. Well, actually, Chris gave me a letter to read, so.
Okay.
Dear City Council, Alameda's historic well from the 1930s has failed. We'd like to replace it with another well. We are aware of the city's ban on new well drills. This is a substitute or replacement well request. We contacted the New Federal slash Tribal Water Board for permission, and they informed us, there is no form or application needed unless we were changing aquifers, and we are not. There is a well completion form that needs to be filled out after completion of the well. We have been working with the tribe for over a year on this project and participating with work group assessing Hot Springs geothermal area. The proposal replacement well is in the same aquifer or seeing the underground water that our current two wells are located. They told us the replacement well must be at least 25 feet from the old, you know, the falling criteria that we wanted to test to when the well's completed. The rate and volume of the substitute well must be equal or less than the well being replaced. The water from the substitute well must be appropriated from the same groundwater sources as the well being replaced. The substitute well must be used for the same purpose as the well being replaced. The old well must be properly abandoned in accordance with procedures adopted by more water well contractors. Submit this form within 60 days, the substitute well is completed for delivery of water. We will be on the above post-well drilled criteria, the well driller has an opening in about three weeks. Last year, when we initiated this process, they were scheduled on a year out, so the time is of essence. Can you please add approval consideration for replacement well notification to your next meeting? Alameda's has more than one city water account, and this well does not need to be impacted or replaced in cold treatment water sources from the city of Hot Springs. Any questions to that? So their main well is, the casing is just raw, it's failed, so we're gonna drill it through it. The, all of all the steps, the final step is for the town's approval, since that's part of our ordinance. The town council gives them the approval of that, that we're gonna drill their replacement well.
I make a motion that we approve the replacement well for Alameda's.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Do you want?
Yeah, let's just let Tootie and them do it while we're watching.
Yes, motion to debate, second, is there any council discussion?
Well, we investigated a lot of wells when we were looking at putting in a swimming pool for the town of Hot Springs. And I know they have two wells, one of them was 30 gallons a minute, and one of them was 90 gallons a minute, and so I'm assuming it's the bigger well, and.
Failed.
It's the 1930s well, but it's failed.
Yeah.
And you might get five gallons of it out of, maybe if you're lucky, I had an actual pump to it, keep the water to the yard, it wasn't anymore, it pretty much failed completely.
It's a small.
Mm-hmm, it's a smaller well.
So, and it's piped through, it's piped throughout the building?
No.
No?
No.
Because they have pump water.
No, it has been.
In the past.
It has been in the past.
It's been deleted, it's just, was not serviceable.
And hopefully, after you drill, that you would get 90 gallons a minute, like the previous well that was there, because that's what it said in the thing. I'm, I'm really kind of unfamiliar with this new water board business, but Barry from Sophia's has been talking about them, and they did a replacement well also, and it was approved by the tribe. Are you using a truck well driller?
I don't think so.
Really?
The same person, the same guy that did Sophia's for his well, but he is now running his own company. So it's the same guy that, then we work there now, he's the boss.
Oh.
So it's, I got a little hard to tell you exactly who it is. It is R.M. Really.
Okay.
So, I'm also like, we're the five of them.
All right.
He's the driller that drilled Sophia's Springs, he just worked for him.
Yeah, but he, now he's the boss of this company.
Yeah, and I'm sure that the tribe is all on board with this anyway.
Yeah.
So.
What size well is it?
What do you mean, what size?
Need casing?
I think they're gonna do 12-inch for, so far, then I think 6-inch after that.
Because it can be artesian, so you do a ceiling, it's a whole process, the ceiling.
Yeah, you gotta fill up the concrete inside the 12-inch casing and then remove it.
And then the other casing will be inside of that, you know, seals, the artesian can't pour out.
Well, I think it's important that we maintain all of the historic hot water wells in town, and I'm, I'm all for it, you know, I hope Alameda's gets a good water supply.
That's what we're looking for.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money to spend for it to not work out, for sure.
Any other council discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Why are we still talking about it? You can't talk about it after we vote, Leslie.
I agree, I can't watch it.
I, I, uh.
It's his fault. I didn't do it.
Next item, Hot Springs Police Department requests for I D I core program. You want to speak on this?
I could, sure. You guys have the.
Do you have it?
Oh, I have it committed memory, but. We provided quite a detailed proposal, so that you guys have a better idea of what I D I core does, and the benefits and things like that, so if you have any questions based on that.
Is this the stuff basically replacing Swift?
No, 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 this has nothing to do with that at all.
No, this is an investigative tool.
Okay.
So this, this, what does this do for you?
The, the majority of what it does for the police department is when we conduct investigations, criminal investigations, background investigations, it's a, it's a system where it's just super fast with information that it gained, gleaned from hundreds of sources that would normally take hours on the phone to call people, send out information, packets, requesting information. We don't, no longer have to do that.
Is it A I? Artificial intelligence, is that what they're using?
I don't, I'm not really sure, but I'm sure there's a component to it, but.
So what is it, what is $1,500 a year for this program? So any type of town, there's any contract, that's basically town council's last approval. It's $125 a month for a tool to help them, it also helps with missing children, background checks, or missing persons, or happy children, that helps with other investigations by pulling information from multiple sources at once. It's a information gathering tool that has hard to convey, so you ask it and delivers.
How big is the database? Is it like statewide, or is it beyond, or?
Oh, it's well beyond.
It's like federal?
Nationwide, yeah.
Okay.
Are there other departments locally that are on this as well?
Hmm, I'm not really sure, my previous employer, that's how I got the idea, it's an old system called Accrunt. Accrunt was a very similar program. Accrunt's now been, they go to I D I core, so I got with the criminal guys from where I used to work, and this is exclusively what they use, so we got a trial on it, it saved, I don't know, 30 hours on one investigation.
Wow.
And then we can use it for our background investigations on the three reserve officers we hired. And so that system, if we were to outsource it and ask a background investigation company to do a criminal background investigation, history background, it would take probably 800 to 1,000 bucks to get a.
Pays for itself.
Yeah, to get a, and as our cases increase and our sophistication of people that we are finding that have been kind of creating crime in town, this is a tool to help us in our investigations.
So are you able to contribute information from the local area to that system?
I don't, I'm not really sure if we can add to it. I'd have to get back to you on that one.
If someone commits a crime and they go through our court system, it goes into full court, and that information gets passed on through the state, and then the state does with that information, puts it into a database, and then they pull that information from all of the other data.
So it's not directly from Hot Springs?
Well, our court is Hot Springs, so yes, yes. If I put in there that what Donna got with DUI, then it's gonna go all over the place, and it comes directly from my computer, so.
It helps us, we wrote a number of search warrants and arrest warrants, and just the information we can get from that, plug and play into our search warrant system that we re-instituted called Secure Warrant, and those, those types of investigations are well put together, so that when we send them to the judge for approval and authorization for said warrants, we've had no problems.
Basically, if you get a cert out of court, you get a blast up or something.
Right.
Okay.
Who's our city judge these days? It's been a long time since they've moved.
Well, you get a ticket, he'll be.
My heart is aching.
The judge is Charles Collins. He's been a few years now. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal for the I D I core program for the town of Hot Springs Police Department.
Motion to debate, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion to debate, second, the council discussion. You're done, all favor, aye?
Aye.
Next. Next item is the skate park. Michael Olson is gonna be here, he must not have been able to make it tonight. I'll just touch on that again until I have more information, but Michael's gonna be here then with all of it. So there is the Confederation Hooty Tribes, along with another donor, I can't tell you who that is, it's not secret, I just don't know the guy's name. And they want to go skate park in every town with reservations, so right now, if you go through Dixon, they're building one in Dixon right now, it's, it's actually in the construction mode, they just finished Pablo here a month or so ago, Saint Ditch has already had one, uh, Roman has already got one, so they want to do one in Hot Springs. A couple things, the, the guys that are actually building the parks and designing the parks, they have been here twice, looking at the proposed property. So my proposal was to them, because they want it on land, of course, that is owned by either us or the tribe, because the tribe doesn't really own any land, this, yeah, they want it in a populated area too, so it's not out somewhere where the kids aren't gonna be able to go play, they'd like it in more of a public visible area. So off our park, our city park, actually Central Avenue runs all the way down to the school property. So Central is 80 feet wide, and it goes down to the park, those swing sets, the dinosaur arm, we have the fence up, but that actually continues on down. So that's the proposed areas from the fence at the back of the park going west, so right in there, going west down through there. They looked at the drainage down through there, they, like I said, the designers have been over here twice now looking at it. And they're talking of maybe a little different design for Hot Springs too, that's why I wish Mike would have been here. One of the things I brought up to them is when we looked at doing a skate park 16 years ago, one of the things we kind of wanted away from is the bowls, the concrete stuff, is the maintenance that goes with that year after year after year, which the tribe has said that's part of what they're gonna do, if they put it in, they will do the maintenance of the park from then on, Lyans will be in charge of that. And, and one of the things Mike talked about is, they're probably gonna have to have a division in Lyans, so they're getting all these parks, skate parks, regular parks, is there gonna actually be a parks maintenance crew that just does parks and stuff, so they already know and they're working on that. One of the things I talked about is what they call an urban skate park, where they don't do bowls and all that, they do, still do some half bikes up, but they do rubber rails, fire hydrants, staircases, you know, railings, picnic tables, you know, stuff like that, it's sort of the urban skate park that's over there. And the guys, the designers were kind of interested in that idea too, so they've been over here looking at that and then drawing some stuff up, so. As I said, I don't have that information right now, but that's what we're looking at with the, with the trucks and the dome. They've been over here looking at that and then drawing some stuff up, so, um, so like I said, I don't have that information right now, but that's what we're looking at with the, with the truck and the donor. Um, so the donor puts in, um, remember Mike telling me, right, the donor's putting in a hundred thousand dollars, the tribe is paying the difference, whatever cost to finish the project, so. Um, the only thing that has the town to do is because it is all gonna be owned by a tribe and maintained by the tribe. Uh, or a piece of property we put on, we'll have to come up with some M O U, and probably do like a ninety-nine year lease on it to them, so they have those, that they have the right to come in and take care of all that stuff, so, um, those are some things.
So where, where exactly is it gonna go for little scooters and blocking my?
Oh, so, so you're, and you're driving down the street looking at the park, where the swing sets and the dinosaur R.
Okay.
From there, on that, through the fence, and go on out, because that goes another, it goes another half block, almost another block that way.
Right through here?
Kind of like the tree. Okay, so that's east, not west?
Yeah, I was confused, you said west.
But that's where you're standing.
That's true.
I was standing at the school when I told you.
The fence, and then that's west.
I was a little confused, I was.
I was marking east and you said west, and I'm like, wait a minute.
It's, it's.
Well, I, I, that's why, that's why I was confused.
So, yeah, and they, uh, they've been in there, looked at the, how the water drains through there and stuff, and they have a plan for that, and all that, so it's nothing, nothing there is a surprise, and then, like I said, uh, Mike and I have walked in a couple times.
They're not gonna cut down those trees, are they?
There are no trees in that, why?
It's bushes, oh.
Those are, yeah, those are.
Okay, looks like trees.
So Randy, how do we, uh, deal with the kids that get injured and stuff, who's gonna carry the insurance for that, the tribe?
Uh, it'll be, uh, it'll be all leased to the tribe, and, and I, I told Mike, and that's what I've been served from a lot of people, and he's, yeah, I hear that a lot, and actually, insurance is not that, not a problem. So that, of course, the town has general liability for playgrounds and all that, but also then, because that will be the tribal property, it will be a lease to them, it will be a tribal fixture, so the tribal will have insurance on that. And I'm sure it's something they've addressed, since there's one in every town on the reservation, I'm sure someone else brought that up. Uh, like I said, I just figured it into it that deep with Mike, because he planned on being here tonight and discussing that with us, so. Any other questions on that? If not, let's move on to other comment on non-agenda items.
I got two. Two, yes. Um, I keep forgetting to ask, so tonight I'm gonna ask, the Christmas lights, uh, going above the top of Main Street, are they still on? That, the, the, or back today?
I have no idea, the town is on charge of them.
Okay. I thought there was a little cabinet there somewhere.
It's, uh, it's, uh, Lions Club is the one that owns and puts them up and does all, a telephone company puts them up as a community service.
Right.
I'm gonna guess for that, but it's plugged in, for some reason, it's not on the proper sensor.
I don't like it still.
Mm-hmm, well, it's, it's kind of.
Ed, do you know why they're still on?
That's an ad question. Ed, do you know why they're still on?
Uh, we had the breakers shut off, but I think somebody's turned it back on, we need to investigate.
Okay. By the way, I'm like at Homesteaders, and it's really nice to get that, you know, to have lights on.
I, I think they should stay on year round.
I don't have a problem, I guess, it's, sure.
I don't have a problem, it's pretty.
Yeah.
Okay?
The other thing is, I noticed this morning, um, in the alley behind our place, well, most of the way west, it looks like somebody sprayed herbicide up to the edge of the, um, the right of it, right of the property line. Because the weeds, there's this like brown patch going up there.
No, it's not, I've seen it. We don't do that, because there's too many organic people in town.
That's right.
Yeah, it's, you guys might, might, I did kind of a little walk around this morning, I didn't see that anyplace else. Other alleyways I saw ahead, that's where.
Those are neighbors.
Yeah, none of us on the block did that, so I was working, like, no, what do you think about? Was this odd to see that brown strip out there?
Was it on the side that the Mission Valley power borders?
Well, I mean, that's right on the edge of the, uh, the right of way.
Yeah.
But, there's, there's a lot of really thick grass, like thirty feet down, and there's nothing there that's dying. So, anything's possible, but didn't seem like it would have been them that did that, because we keep our yards mowed, uh, in the driveway, so if there's tall grass growing there in the first place. Just thought I'd ask.
Now that's.
Oh, I answer for you, sorry.
I'm kind of driven to, you had to know a little.
Well, get, get a better, get a better question, I'll answer.
I'll work with that for that some time.
Okay, any other public comment? Hearing none, uh, motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Captain.
Thank you.